For over forty years, SEM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SEM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SEM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SEM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SEM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth and keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SEM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SEM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SEM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SEM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution.
Counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.
We get started with the regular meeting of January sixth of the Simsbury Zoning Commission. And the first order of business is to determine whether we need alternatives. And I see, um, all of the commissioners except Shannon are here. And Shannon is not going to be with us. So why don't we appoint Jackie, who's coming in down there, to sit for Shannon?
Sure.
And Josh isn't here so far, and if he comes in, that'll be great, but you got the nod, Jackie. Okay, so, um, next item is approval of the minutes from December sixteenth. Our last regular meeting. I read them, I don't see any corrections needed or additions, but does anybody else have comments on that December sixteenth?
I did.
Good.
Surprisingly. Don't look at me like that. I think I made the motion to continue the meeting, and it was attributed to Kate. But didn't I make the motion?
I have no idea.
I'm pretty sure I did.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
No, no, I think it was your idea.
It was at your.
No, I did it.
Oh, you did it from there?
Yeah, my name is on there. Well, no, I mean, I'm okay with messing up if it counts.
Well, it's quite all right.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
I'm just excited I found a mistake for once. I never find anything. I'm always like, yeah, it looks good to me, and then people find twenty mistakes.
Well, most of the time.
So Kate, you're referring to line sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine, yes.
I'm very sorry.
So anyway, yeah, I'm pretty sure that was me.
Commissioner Beal should be changed to Commissioner.
Madigan.
So that's it. So the correction on line sixty-nine, is there anything else? Then how about a motion to adopt the minutes as they were submitted with that correction on line sixty-nine?
I'll move that we accept and approve the minutes from the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting as amended.
Second.
Jackie, you're the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. That's approved, six to nothing, so we're all settled with the minutes. And, uh, under new commission business, we have just one application, there's a sign permit request for a new sign at one twenty-five Latimer Lane. This building's actually on the southwest corner of where Latimer hits Hot Meadow Street. And is there, is there somebody here to talk about?
Allison?
Yes.
Allison is here?
Just, would you like to get up to the podium?
Sure.
I probably had the same slides that Joe had.
Oh, perfect, that's good.
Feel free to point out anything you think is, we should space, be sure that we see. And I'm saying, don't assume that we've all thoroughly written, remember everything that was in the application.
Perfect.
Whatever you think is really important, make sure.
Great, you got it.
We're gonna have an opportunity before we're done to ask you questions. If there's, after you go through sort of our, through what's there.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. So the first slide here is just showing that there's an existing wall sign with, and we're proposing, it's just under eleven square feet. It's a double-sided, non-illuminated sign, and here's where the location is. It's gonna be right there in the island, it's ten feet off the property line. And this is a street view showing when you're coming up to the property. And it's like right on the other side of that mailbox.
Inside.
Yeah, on the inside, yep. And here is the proposed sign. The design review board has asked that we add a black border on each end of the posts, kind of looking like this.
Nice. Allison, show me, since I wasn't there.
So this was one of the options.
In here.
On each side.
Okay.
This was one of the options that I think was probably one of the better options. The other option was to shrink the sign to the post for closer to the wording.
Yeah, I understand that DRB said that they were concerned about the white space.
Yes.
And so that's a reason to kind of close that, I guess.
So your proposal is amended to include.
Yes, to include a border or to shrink, yes.
Of each end.
Yep. And here is the view showing the proposed landscaping with the sign.
There you go. And as DRB, this is my reminder slide for DRB, did recommend approval with that, with that recommended consideration.
So the greenery in that slide is simply reflects the material we were.
I think that was not included, or in the, I think the staff report suggested that Joe, that they were working on landscaping that has been included.
I'm just trying to be clear.
Yeah.
It's done, we just saw it.
Yes.
Correct.
Leaving something for later, if you approve or by staff.
Yes.
Can you confirm this is a non-lit sign? This is not.
I know it was said, but I just.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have?
And then we prepared a draft motion for you, as we usually do.
No comments, no questions? Was there a sign there before? I mean, I drove by there today and I saw, you know, kind of.
I mean, there's, it's not an, there hasn't been a freestanding sign out there for some time, maybe, you know, a decade ago, but as we understand it. But I don't think there's been one in recent times.
And the upline review of permit, I see, I didn't jump out, I mean, it's only good for five years. Is there a process to call attention to?
Wetlands, it was in our packet. Oh, yes, I did get Wetlands approval.
Oh, yeah, there was, so there was a designated agent approval, right?
Yes, yes.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Yeah, that's, so that's, that's, um, the, the, based on the recent state law change, the, um, the wetlands runs concurrent with, with this is, is a site plan approval. So five plus five, or is it fourteen plus five? It's a lengthy, the legislature extended land use approvals for a much longer period of time. It used to be just five years, now it's fourteen.
And it's no longer five years, it's forever, basically.
No, I think it's fourteen with an option to extend by commission approval by additional five. That's how I read the law.
Okay. Comments? How about a motion to approve? Does someone want to make a motion? It's the draft motion is on the back of.
It's right there, right?
Staff report.
Yep.
Okay. I'll, I'll do it. I move that the zoning commission approve application, ZC number twenty-four dash twenty-eight of Capital Region Education Council owner Allison Iverson of Loriento Sign Group applicant for a permit to construct a plus or minus eleven square foot, non-illuminated freestanding sign for Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center located at one two five Latimer Lane. Assessors map F seventeen block two oh one lot zero zero two D, Simsbury, Connecticut, oh six oh seven oh zone I dash one. Subject to the sign plan tilted correct dated titled, excuse me, one eleven dash, or eleven thirteen twenty-four, including the landscaping plan dated one three twenty-five, prepared by the Loriento Sign Group.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I was looking at something else, but in your reading, did you include the reference to condition number two?
I read what is up there.
Yeah, that's, so we've, Joe included that, it's not necessary, it's a requirement, the administrative's earned information. We did. You might want to just reference the recommendation of the design review board for the black signs.
Um, yeah. Uh, pending the completion of the recommended changes by the design review board.
Can I, George, I believe that's actually Weetog? I guess.
It is.
Yeah. Can we amend that here?
It's in the town of Simsbury.
I know.
And that's how staff approaches.
Just making sure we're all set, so she doesn't have to come back.
If you mail a letter to that address.
That zip code is wrong.
The Simsbury Post Office will return it, they won't deliver it. We have that fairly frequently coming up as a long-time Weetog resident. It's a rule in the Simsbury Post Office, oh six oh seven, won't deliver your stuff. So they send it back. And sometimes with motor vehicles, it's really a problem because then you lost whatever it was they were trying to communicate, you don't get. But in any case, I think it's relevant that the, I'm not sure what we're required to recognize in our, in our motion. The location of the building is in the town of Simsbury.
Yeah, you know.
The mailing address is Weetog, oh six oh eight nine. So what are you trying to include there?
You can do whatever you want.
Weetog's not a town, I mean, it's, the town of Simsbury is a little.
But why is the zip code there then? That's not the correct zip code as an address, yeah.
Right, you have to, you have to, they have to match either, Weetog's a legal.
Is the, is the zip code required for a motion to go through?
No, we will never include a zip code again.
I'm gonna amend my motion to strike the zip code entirely from the, okay, I mean.
Never.
So will we refer to it as one twenty-five Latimer Lane?
Sure, Simsbury. Notice it not included.
I will, again, second the amended motion.
Not trying to hold you up, really just trying to make it accurate.
Yeah, and they should.
Well, in order to avoid any uncertainty, we're going to avoid this photo on this again, so with that change in the address. All in favor of approval of the slightly revised text?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Then it's approved unanimously with a slight change. Striking the zip code. Okay, so you're all set?
That's true.
No.
When we look ahead to item four of the agenda, there's still, I don't know if you want to pick up one, either of both.
Yeah, I do have, so let me, I'll just go first. So, um, so in our kind of commitment to give you a heads up on upcoming, upcoming applications and applications for receipt, because this body doesn't formally accept or an application for receipt. But we do have a rezoning, a zone change coming up at your one twenty-two meeting along with you. The continuation of your housing strategies, public hearing. And this is a zone change request on the northern portion of just south of Dorset Crossing, that fifty-six acre vacant parcel that is between, is between the ice rink essentially and Dorset Crossing. So that entire fifty-six acres today is zoned I one, it is an industrial zone, it is a restrictive industrial zone, but it's our industrial zone nonetheless. And the property owner or the, the applicant in this case, who I think is a contract, who has a contract on the property, is proposing to rezone it from I one to B two. So you will have a public hearing on one twenty-two to consider that.
And who is the applicant?
Uh, the applicant is the, I think it's the ownership group of the, uh, the skating facility. The ISCC.
Oh, they own that too?
Well, I don't think, I don't think they've completed purchase of, of the property, but.
Did I have any plans for the property, you know?
Well, we'll provide a staff report and, um, not, not at this time.
Say yes, Tony. Maybe.
No, no, they actually don't, so that's a little bit funny. All right, so anyway, that's the, that's coming. And then I just had a couple of, just a couple of updates for you, and then I take any questions on, on other stuff that's going on. But I just wanted to update you on, if you remember, we filed the eight thirty G application, certificate of housing affordability application with the state housing commissioner back in, um, at the end of December. And so they had one additional comment that we needed to address, which was we had to add an additional piece of paperwork. And so that was accepted, and there's a ninety-day decision period, so we would expect a decision from that, from the state housing commissioner on that moratorium request and application by March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. There is a thirty-day additional public comment period, and then they take sixty days to go through their review.
Can you run that by me again? It's ninety days for what? And then sixty days?
So, so it's, I mean, it's essentially, they've got ninety days to make their decision, they do allow thirty days for additional, kind of statewide public comment.
And that's part of the ninety.
It's part of the ninety.
The remainder, the other sixty is the decision time.
Their deadline is March twenty-seven.
And until that moratorium takes place, anybody who puts forth an application.
I would absolutely let the town attorney answer that question. And since we don't have an application, it's.
Right, I was just curious, okay.
There's no. I'm not gonna ask that. We'll, we'll cross that bridge. It is budget season, and if you remember, last year we received from the Board of Selectment seventy-five thousand dollars towards a zoning regulation rewrite of the townwide. We decided on recommendation of the Town Administration's office to break it into, into, into two cycles. And so this year we're gonna ask for fifty thousand, giving us a total of a hun, which would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a full zoning regulation rewrite of the townwide regulations. I don't think we anticipate any real changes with center zone, except maybe for some process stuff. Certainly nothing real substantive, but, um, we think that your zoning regulations are, are not great, the townwide ones, and really need a good scrubbing. And so we estimate that that's what that cost is gonna be. So I just want to let you know, we are asking for that. I mean, essentially asking for it on your behalf, although you don't really have a part in the budget, in the budget process. But just wanted to let you know that we are asking for that balance of the money.
What's the one twenty-five for our consultant?
That's the whole, yeah, we can't do it in-house, we'll go, we'll go, we'll go out and find a consultant to do the work. Yeah.
So Tim, just a little more in that process.
Sure.
You would potentially develop a request for proposals?
We would, we would develop an RFP.
We have to wait until the referendum approving the budget before you start that process. I'm trying to get a sense of, is this anything we're gonna deal with in twenty twenty-five?
I mean, no, no, but I mean, I certainly would like to get through, um, you know, budget presentation and get feedback from the Board of Selectment before, before jumping that far into it. But I think if, you know, if, if we get through unscathed through that March review process typically, I'm not gonna look at. And who's here, but normally we'll have a sense, if there's a real objection to it, we'll know in March or, we'll know by then.
Well, let me ask it differently. I don't need all the details, but when would you expect if the fifty are close to, close enough to make it work, likely to work? When would we be seeing proposals?
I think summertime, summertime. I think this summer. And I think we, I think we will need to do a little bit of work as a group on how you want to manage that process, whether you have a subcommittee, whether you, I mean, so there's, there are some things that we, we're gonna want to talk through on approach.
And we would have the input of the consultant, because we've already identified the consultant at that point.
Yeah, we'll just have to see. I mean, I think there are a couple of ways to do it. You can do it by yourself without, you know, you can just do it with managing a consultant doing it. You know, some towns appoint an ad hoc committee, other, so there's, there's different ways to kind of manage the process. I've got to give it more thought as well, I haven't thought about what that RFP looks like.
Is that something that would be completed this year?
No, we wouldn't start it to FY twenty-six. All right, so it's not in. Yeah. I'm just saying that we're gonna ask for the money, remember that budget cycle, the budget process starts now. And then, you know, the approval's in, in delay, I guess.
For FY twenty-six.
Say again?
For FY.
It would be FY twenty-six, yes. Well, FY twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So the balance of the money is not actually available until FY twenty-six?
Correct, yeah, you're correct, yeah, we don't have, I'm asking for the, the balance in, in this budget process. I have fifty, we have fifty thousand now.
Well, I'm, I'm, I guess, I'm interested in, I mean, we've been making do for a long time with zoning regulations that are really troubling at best. And the fact that we have different regulations for the center of town versus the rest of town and potentially a need for some, some sort of distinguishing, possibly some sort of distinguishing regulations for the terrapin village. I don't, I'm not suggesting it, but it's come up before and potentially Weetog, the other sort of village areas. And so, you know, once we have time to wrestle with all that or dismiss it as we're not gonna distinguish it, but we, you know, having multiple regulation sets is really not where we want to be. And it's unfortunate that we've limped along all these years. And, yeah, so I think it's gonna be a wise investment, that's my opinion. And the sooner the better, that's all. So I'm glad to, to see that reminded.
It's, I mean, it's a, it's a big, it will be a big project with a lot of.
Right, and it's gonna, as we've talked about before, as we look at our own objectives for this commission for the, you know, the next, after we finish the toolkit, however that ends up in the next, probably six to eight weeks, that's what I'm thinking. Then we're ready to look again at our objectives.
Exactly.
Then we have to go back to the plan of conservation development and other input and see what we want to identify. And as we've talked about, my point is that we, we're in the business of trying to encourage that real activity that we, our regular activity, which is to consider applications that have to do with, you know, expansion of housing opportunity, business opportunity, that kind of thing. But we don't control when it comes in, and we get surges. And so it throws off what we're able to do, which raises the importance of having a consultant whose job is to create a track and a timeline and make sure that we stay there somehow by hook or by crook. But, yeah, I do hope we have the pressure, you know, surging activity to complicate getting this work done, but I think it's hugely important for the future.
I do too.
Yeah, glad to see it. Just one other thing that I can't wait to ask, I mean, it's not really directly on this point, but every time I drive by the, the building that burned a couple of weeks ago, I'm wondering, because there was immediate reports it was gonna be demolished. I mean, the night of, or the next morning, uninformed or unauthorized reference, it's being demolished. And now I'm wondering, day after day, it's still there. While they might be doing something, it's not obvious it's gonna be demolished or any, or when. I'm wondering if you have any insight on what's going on.
I do have insight. First, the first point is that the Fire Marshal's investigation is not complete. And therefore, for that, that reason alone, the structure cannot be demolished. Um, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, but I do understand that it is the property owner's plan to, once, once the investigation is complete and once the insurance, whatever that, you know, whatever that stuff, you know, is, plan to demolish, to demolish the entire structure, and then, you know, consider options after that.
Thank you. I would also, I mean, a part of the reason I'm, I find it curious, and I understand the explanation, is that two summers ago, I have a summer residence in Barkhamsted, so I drive for the summer months, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth to New Hartford and Barkhamsted. And we had a building burn in the center of New Hartford. It was a huge fire of a very sort of, well, the center is poor for that structure having burned, but it was demolished and gone within, I think they basically had the building gone within just a few days. I mean, they started tearing it down, what was left of it the next day or a couple of days later. It could be the owner's attitude was different, and the insurance company was different, or, I don't know. Yeah, that's, the quicker it can be gone, even if it's, they're a long time making plans or something.
I think everybody's working on that same page, but I think it does have, have almost everything to do with the, the investigation.
Good.
I do have a question for you, George. I obviously know that they've completed the demolition, the old Wagner Ford site. Do we have any update on the rejected construction?
So they have, um, I believe they've submitted building plans.
Okay.
And they're under review.
That's okay.
And they, they had a couple of other housekeeping items. They, um, they had to submit a revised, uh, a boundary plat, there's, if you remember, that property included several parcels with like three different addresses, so they, in fact, they were in today submitting a rev, uh, essentially a property line, a boundary line adjustment plat that, that takes the three parcels or four parcels of the, of the, not, I don't know how many acres this, I don't remember now, four and a half acres into one parcel, so that had to be done. But I understand they're, they're ready to move forward? Thanks.
Well, while we're asking questions, do you know anything that's going on with the old Canes building? Has there been any interest in that?
No, no, you know, we've had a couple of calls about the property, you know, it's a little bit challenging because it's pre-existing non-conforming, the parking's a little funky, and the setbacks are a little weird, so you wanted to add it on, it makes it just more challenging. But I don't know that we've had any, um, anything beyond that. The last thing I was gonna just, um, we, the land use specialist position, which, you know, Joe Hollis had been in for, for some time, although he was promoted last year, we fired a new land use specialist, that's the front counter position, our kind of our first point of contact along with the building side of the house. Um, and, and phone answering, so you may start to see some emails from Ryan as we kind of onboard him. And he's a young man who's just finishing up his master's in public administration at UConn. So happy to, happy to add him to the team.
Thank you.
So on one, just one twenty-two, you'll have continuation of your housing strategies, public hearing, and the, the zone change. I don't know that I have anything else for you that night, but that'll be enough. I suspect.
We're doing the zone change first, so they don't have to sit through the public hearing?
Yeah, that's probably what I would, I would recommend. Yeah, I think that's probably a better thing, if you guys are gonna kind of continue the public hearing and then you ask questions and do that, you know, more of a work session style, that's probably the right thing to do.
I, I wonder how many people will be at that public hearing. We, we, we came to the end of it last time, it's not like we returned people away, who knows?
Yeah, you never know.
Well, we had, at the second meeting, we had six members of the public to speak, and three of them were repeats from the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we were already having repeats by the time one.
Yeah.
But I just, I will be there, but I'll be curious to see how that goes.
I'll be thinking about it. Seeing the sights down there.
Yeah.
Just one other thing, I, I noticed today when I drove by the two hundred Hot Meadow Development down there, that the building that we've been sort of watching for some time now, looking forward to completion, on the north side of the driveway, the commercial building. I think I've got this right. All of the places for windows and doors have something on them now. The building appears to me to be enclosed, but it's plywood in many of those openings, it's not finished windows or finished doors, but at least it's enclosed. That's not an informal announcement on behalf of the owner, that's based on my observation. Still wouldn't have a reliable sort of statement, I guess, about when the building is gonna be done and a tenant actually in there, but there's a reason for hope that it's not too far down the road. But just when, we'll have to wait and see, I guess. So, anything else? Oh, and I think we finished our item number four on the agenda, and it's appropriate for an adjournment. Does someone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Oh, and I think we finished our item number four on the agenda, and it's appropriate for an adjournment, does someone want to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Kate, have a second?
Second.
Tony, okay. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Great, and the meeting is adjourned at seven thirty.